...by Mr. Henry and then we'll have the other leaders.
Our most gracious heavenly Father, we come to you in that order asking to be our guide this morning and conduct in this city council session, we ask you to lead us in thy direction. And heavenly Father, we ask you to watch over our safety forces, Lord has helped protect us and supported us daily, and we ask you to watch over and protect them. He with our men and women in its body, through battles, through the freedom that we enjoy. Thank you for them, to keep their heaven and earth at hand. We want those who are sick, to come unto us, Lord, and heal them and bless them, bless all these saints that help today. Amen.
I am led by the United States of America and to the Republic of the United States, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You may see. Roll call.
Kelly.
Here.
Morrow.
Here.
Cole.
Here.
Gabriel.
Here.
Kathleen.
Here.
Henry.
Here.
Johnson.
Here. Uh, need a motion to approve the minutes of June 4th, 2012. A motion of second, on page 11. Minutes have been approved. Motion appointments, there are none. Special orders committee, uh, Mayor Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, you made a call two weeks ago, we had a large group of volunteers, uh, from the Heath Community Arts Council, uh, who donated a lot of their time and talents to the, uh, events and programs that take place at, uh, at the big Shea House. Many of them obviously are, um, retirement age, uh, or older. And I mentioned a couple of weeks ago that, uh, this evening I wanted to highlight, um, a whole different generation of people who, uh, are volunteering their time, um, I think, uh, in the equal goal of making our city and our community as a whole, uh, a better place to live. There's a, a group, it's through, uh, Mental Health America of Licking County called The Acronym is PAVE, uh, Prevent Assault and Violence Education. And for the past couple of years, Jan Green River, who is a resident of the city of Heath, um, has contacted me and, uh, I've been very glad to become involved, uh, with this group. They meet, uh, I think it's every, once every week, Jan, is that right? Uh, during the school year. And, um, a group of teenagers, um, who focus on trying to share with their peers, uh, a better way of handling, uh, bad situations that come at some of them, uh, sometimes on a daily basis. And, uh, every once in a while I go in, uh, to their meeting and I talk to them a little bit about what I do and about what I see and, um, uh, they share with me, uh, some of the information that, that they see going on. They, uh, typically will do one or two, uh, role-playing skits where they will role-play out a, a particular situation, uh, that, that they may encounter. They do this not just for me, but they also go around to all of the area schools and perform these kind of skits, uh, for their peers, the, the students at, at the schools as well. And I, um, I was honored, um, a couple of weeks ago to, uh, be able to go to their, uh, year-end recognition dinner. And the teenagers who are members of this group, um, awarded me with a dedication to prevention award. And I, I was really touched, uh, by this because I, I always tell people that when I go to the PAVE meetings, uh, I feel as though I come away with more than what I've actually given to the students, um, at these meetings. To hear, uh, some of the stories, um, of, of, of what some of them have to deal with. You know, sometimes, uh, for some of these kids, life, uh, kind of kicks them in the teeth every once in a while. And there's two ways that you can react to it. The group of, of students that are in this PAVE program are promoting the proper way, uh, to respond and react to, to these types of situations. And as I said, they work very hard, uh, through this program to help make, um, our entire community, uh, better through showing, uh, their peers, uh, you know, the type of way that you should act and react, uh, in certain situations. So, I, I wanted to, uh, I, I asked, uh, them to please come this evening because, um, I, as I said, I, I didn't feel as though really I was deserving of their recognition, but I know for a fact that they are deserving of our recognition. And, uh, so Jan, if you and the group maybe could come up front here and I'll join you down front. I have a proclamation, uh, that I'd like to, to read. Whereas it is one of the responsibilities of the mayor of the city of Heath to recognize occasions of outstanding significance and extraordinary organizations. And whereas with great foresight, the Prevent Assault and Violence Education, PAVE, program was founded in 1994 and is currently under the leadership of Jan Green River, a resident of the city of Heath. Whereas PAVE is a program led by peers, a majority of whom are students of Heath City Schools, to educate and help Licking County youth in the multifaceted subject of violence. Whereas PAVE is rooted in the belief that we are all more alike than we are different and strives to teach its participants the importance of tolerance. And whereas the PAVE program empowers the younger generation to avoid making decisions that will have a negative impact on their lives and their community. Whereas PAVE is a nationally accredited education program that has received multiple strategies against violence everywhere, regional awards. And now therefore, on behalf of the city council and the citizens of Heath, I, Mark B. Johns, Mayor of Heath, Ohio, to hereby recognize the PAVE program and its local members that dedicate their time and energy to inspire the lives of our community.
Jan, you want to make sure anything with the, with council about the group and what they do?
Um, yes, I would like to let you know that we have about sixty-eight students who were with us last year. This is just a very small sampling. About one-third to one-half of them happen to be Heath High School students. But we have members from all over Licking County. We actually have a grad with us tonight. Just depends on who's available. But we love what we do, we love going into the schools. We're going to be working at the Keegan Ash Splash in August at the pool. So, it's not just the schools, but anywhere in the community that we can do something to help prevent violence. These guys are wonderful, wonderful examples of what we do and draw from this.
Thank you. Can they record say your name?
Sure.
My name is Toni Green River. Uh, I just graduated from Heath High School. I was the president this morning.
My name is David Greeno. I will be a junior at Heath High School in the fall. I currently, I am the deputy secretary.
In the state of Holland, I'm a junior.
My name is Sydney Moore. I will be a sophomore in this fall and I currently are a YLCU graduate.
My name is Kevin O'Gale. That's from, um, I graduated from Eastlake, Orlando. I'm with BYU and I'm pretty new. I'm just a college student, I'm very pleased to be here. I'm glad I have.
Yeah.
And I'm Lisa Green River. I graduated from Heath five years ago. And I am the PAVE assistant coordinator. So I hope Jan knows.
And he's actually started, when I became PAVE coordinator in 2003 as a freshman, he came in and volunteered, just as these teens do, and just recently became a PAVE member of M.J.'s staff to work with the PAVE program. So, he's been doing it as long as I am, he knows how a court is.
Jan, you happen to recall the total number of volunteer hours put in by, for this school year, put in by the PAVE members?
I know it is well over three thousand fifty hours, but I can't be more specific.
You know, um, sometimes, uh, young people in our community, uh, get slighted, uh, and looked down upon. And I always have an opportunity to interact with young people such as this. And so, uh, I always take a little bit of offense when I hear that from, from some people because I know that there are a lot of fantastic young people, uh, that are in our community that are really doing, uh, some great stuff. And like I said, I just feel as though you folks need to be recognized. Um, I want to let everybody on council know that when they have their weekly meeting, they like to, uh, have, you know, like an after-school snack or whatever, some sandwiches or whatever. Obviously, that costs money to do that. Um, I want to, uh, encourage all of us, um, here this summer, by the end of summer, let's put a little fund together that we can then give to Jan so that it can help pay for some of those after-school snacks that, that kids have, uh, at their weekly meeting. So I'll, I'll challenge everybody to help kick in a little bit for that, okay?
They're hungry.
Jan, thanks again for what you do and, and also thank you, kids, for everything that you do.
Just for safety, one more time.
Thank you.
Yep?
Thank you. That's all I have, Mr. President. Thanks.
Okay, um, unfinished business, Mr. President. Mr. President.
I would like to, uh, make a motion that we bring ordinance 41, 2012 off the table.
Second.
Have a motion in second to take ordinance 41, 2012 off the table. Uh, roll call.
Kelly.
Yes.
Morrow.
Yes.
Cole.
Yes.
Yes.
Kathleen.
Yes.
Henry.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes. Yeah, ordinance 41, 2012 off the table. Mr. President, Mr. Effley, I would like to make a motion to, uh, accept ordinance 41, 2012 as amended.
Second.
Let's say you wanted it as its, as amended, as it's, you know what he wants to do? You just want it accepted amended, let's say you want it amended. Amendment as my, I would like to amend ordinance 41, 2012 as, as printed.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion to amend it as printed. Any discussion?
Uh, for the audience members, I'll, uh, just say, um, our charter review committee has, uh, come up with two different charter changes. And one of them that they came up with that we read, uh, two meetings, or a meeting together, um, or actually two meetings together, if we would go by exactly what they wanted to change the charter to, if something happened to the mayor, currently if something happened to the mayor, the president of council acts as, uh, the mayor until we can replace the mayor. And the president of council actually becomes the mayor. Well, they wanted to have it where you could elect someone. And the problem is, if something happened to the mayor and the council president couldn't take the office, then there would be no mayor until there was an election. So essentially, we could go weeks, months, a year or two without having a mayor, nothing would get done. Didn't sign any, many purchase orders and all that kind of stuff. So, uh, there's just a little loophole in their initial wording. So, the amended part actually spells out those changes and stuff so that it makes it that if the mayor or something, we'd either resign or through death or something happened to him, the council president would act as mayor for at least sixty days or, or up to sixty days until we can get a, an actual mayor. So, that's kind of nutshell what it, what the amendment is actually doing. Any other discussion on that?
See, no other discussion, we have a vote on the amendment. On roll call.
Kelly.
Yes.
Morrow.
Yes.
Cole.
Yes.
Kathleen.
Yes.
Henry.
Yes. Okay, just, uh, minute, okay, now. Now, we wait, let her, I'm gonna let her read it.
Ordinance 41, 2012, the ordinance certifying the Licking County Board of Elections of the House of Representatives and Charter for Submission of Elections at City of Ohio.
Mr. President, Mr. Effley. I would like to make a motion to, uh, to adopt, uh, ordinance 41, 2012 as amended.
Second.
Okay. Uh, motion in a second to adopt it as amended, any discussion? If not, roll call.
Kelly.
Yes.
Morrow.
Yes.
Cole.
Yes.
Gabriel.
Yes.
Kathleen.
Yes.
Henry.
Yes. Okay, 41, 2012 has been adopted as amended. Quick, hold on a second. Okay, now, Mr. President, uh, Mr. President, I would like to make a motion to, uh, bring ordinance 42, 2012 off the table.
Second.
Have a motion in second to take ordinance 42, 2012 off the table. Roll call.
Kelly.
Yes.
Morrow.
Yes.
Cole.
Yes.
Gabriel.
Yes.
Henry.
Yes.
Johnson.
Okay. Ordinance 42, 2012 is off the table.
Ordinance 42, 2012, the ordinance certifying the Licking County Board of Elections of the House of Representatives and the Charter for Submission of Elections at City of Ohio.
Mr. President, Mr. Effley, I would like to make a motion to adopt ordinance 42, 2012.
Second.
Have a motion in second to adopt ordinance 42, 2012, any discussion? For the audience members, we didn't have to amend this when it was all right, when they did it. The first time we just tabled it so both could get passed at the same time and go to the board elections at the same time. So, for some reason, it was, uh, tabled in the first place. Any other discussion? Not roll call.
Kelly.
Yes.
Morrow.
Yes.
Cole.
Yes.
Gabriel.
Yes.
Henry.
Yes.
Johnson.
Ordinance 42, 2012. Okay, um, petitions of communications, there are none. Visitors, now's the time to come to visitors. Uh, if any visitor would like to speak, uh, just step up to the podium there, take your name and address and cause your concern.
Thank you, Goodwin, 1611, Henry. Um, first of all, just want to thank Chief Huggins for inviting us over last week. Always like to know the safety stuff and learning a little bit more about the training parts. I'm interested. I'd like to back it up though with, you know, you guys talking about all that training and stuff, the, the SERF program that's here in town in Licking County. Man, I went to the SERF program and it's an all-holunder thing, it's great. Now, we're not set up to be twenty-four-seven volunteers, but if they need us, they know how to get ahold of us and that was awesome. I just want you to know that that's available and we actually took it in Hebrew, but it's available every weeknight, so that we could go, it's, I think it's seven weeks, seven weeks. Anyway, I do feel like it SERF means a lot, uh, community emergency response to me. There's also another one that goes with it for our, my dog friends and it's called ZARD and it's disaster animal relief team, which also kind of follows in the same path with Tony Walker. So, two good ideas and it kind of follows into what these folks are doing too because the volunteers that we need for many things. You guys are awesome, that's a great program, I appreciate what you're doing. Because they're here and because people have noticed and you all know it, uh, several times we've been looked at while the cameras in the back room. So I want you folks to know that Wayne and I are actually recording the meeting and putting it on YouTube so that you and your family members can watch it at home. Until we get it done here, we're doing it ourselves. I had, um, five volunteers from the Shea House last month come up and say they liked that idea. They appreciate the idea of having that, so they think, oh, look at it. Phyllis Weaver was another one that said that. I just wanted you to know, it's not that we're trying to hide anything or push anything, we're just trying to make it available. Campus is, we don't have to store it, then it costs us nothing. You can have it on there in about three hours after we get home. Youtube slash, youtube.com/sorrywatch and you can find Heath City Council. Now, I realize people don't like iTunes or something like that, but it's available. Again, because it costs us nothing and until you go in and actually search, you want to find Heath City Council. There are many other council meetings already on there. We, we looked last night just to kind of make sure it was all right. So we have been putting the meetings on there, committee meetings, and folks are watching. What's your last count? Two hundred and some views that we've had. So, um, I think we're finding people are liking it and they appreciate it. I know having the ordinance is on the front page, I congratulate you for that it goes on there. I went there, I noticed the difference. As to the front pages coming back together, so, um, people are asking for it. Again, I can't get them to come in here, but I did talk to them, I did get a from them and they said, I saw, I saw it, I, I checked it out. So, I just want you to know it's, it's for everybody's benefit and it's there. If you want to look, you don't have to watch the whole thing. But just want you all to know why we're doing it, what it's for, it's just to let us all know what's going on. So, thank you.
Any other visitors?
Seeing none, uh, moving on to committees. Uh, before due committee reports, uh, roll call with visitors. If you were just here for your preparation, you have something else you have to do or need to go, you won't hurt our feelings if you want to get up and leave, you have to do something else. But if you want to stick around, we'll probably only be another, uh, fifteen, twenty minutes, we'll probably be done anyway. So, it's up to you, you know. Moving on to committee reports, uh, I need some budget, Mr. President.
Mr. President, uh, we, this evening, we have one legislative request to appropriate twenty-two thousand dollars from within the county five-dollar inclusive license tax to Chippewa Seal Summit Street. Other, under, other items, under Alexander reported our city infound a surplus auction held on June ninth, brought in nineteen thousand eight hundred seventy-three dollars. Other items, we, uh, had a lengthy discussion on proposal which wasn't possible. Under Alexander, any other comments?
Nothing to add, Mr. President. Kim Geller.
Yeah, I wanted to commend, uh, tax clerk three, Deb Shepherd, in our office. She achieved a four-point, uh, grade point average, uh, for the spring 2012, um, quarter at COTC. She's studying, getting her degree in accounting, so we're real happy to have her.
Good thing. Thank you. Public services. Mr. Harv.
Thank you, Mr. President. The next week, uh, we, uh, eat public services will be next Monday, June twenty-fifth, five-thirty, here at city hall. John Geller.
I have nothing to add, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thanks, President. Thank you. Open safety, Mr. Allison.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm from safety net, June eleventh, at five-thirty PM. Uh, we can release, under base statistics, there were a total of one thousand one hundred seventy-three calls for circus. Of them, a hundred and twenty-two are fits and force, fifty one were arrests, four to seven were accidents, and half fourteen were citations. Under overtime usage, we made, there was a total of eleven thousand one hundred eighty-one dollars. The year-to-date total of fifty-five thousand eighty. On the false barbitones, there were a total of thirty. All three of those were commercials that were residential. Under other, she had proposed that they were still waiting, awaiting quotes, uh, for the, uh, kids to be able to be back on. Uh, House McCray will ask if that, uh, possible next month, next meeting, that we can go out back here and really get a bit of visual on what she would have done, uh, forty-five, forty-two. With that being determined, five-thirty seven, we found a fire. Hundred base statistics for fire. There were a total of thirty-eight fire runs, a year-to-date total of a hundred and sixty-eight. There were a hundred and sixty-nine EMS runs with a year-to-date total of seven hundred and fifty-two. There were ninety-six transports with a year-to-date total of four hundred and fifty-two. There was one legislative request, disposal of the broken ice maker. Under the monthly expense report, the monthly wages were made of sixty-five thousand nine hundred and ninety-eight dollars and eighty-four cents with a made overtime of twelve thousand three hundred thirty-two dollars and ninety cents. That gives a year-to-date total of seventy-seven thousand five hundred ninety-two dollars and ninety-two cents. Under equipment, uh, the ice maker, uh, that, uh, chief asked to dispose of under the legislative request, was, was replaced at a cost of twenty-six hundred dollars. That was in lieu of replacing or repairing the usual at a cost of a thousand dollars. Also for equipment, the air conditioner, uh, at station one, uh, the compressor in the unit was replaced at a cost of eighteen hundred dollars. And under equipment, uh, the breathing air seal, a lot of it needs to be replaced. Under personnel, firefighter loves to bother and pass. And, uh, there are also two persons, firefighters there, detective, have been on for surgery. Under training, uh, the care car for DuPont, uh, that was, was there all week long. And, uh, a fourth of reserve training, uh, is still under way. And, uh, she spoke a little bit about the fire accident out in the middle preserve that had a serious injury and, uh, required a med, med, med flight, medevac, uh, to the hospital. And I believe she said it took like, she, four hours to remove that, that person from the, from the reserve?
From start to finish, yes.
From start to finish, and, uh, yeah, I'll never stay in there. There's no runs in that preserve, so, um, that was, uh, that was a huge success getting down there and getting that done and, uh, quite a run if you guys were training for any ice kits that they had at the preserve. Under old business, radios have been, uh, rebanded. That was required, uh, that needed to be done by January two thousand thirteen. Also under old business, EMS software, EMS software has been ordered. And, uh, also under old business, they received, uh, two new quick top books. Uh, these top books are used at the squads, uh, by fire agents to record runs and take data on those runs. They were, uh, cost of twenty-nine hundred dollars each. And she presented to, uh, did award a grant to help, uh, pay the cost of it. Under new business, the weather science, uh, that we have around the city need radio models replaced. In order for them to be re-banded, uh, it's a cost of six hundred fifty dollars each. Actually, six hundred fifty dollars, thirteen hundred dollars each. And there's a total of six in the city, this has to be done by January two thousand thirteen. Uh, we adjourned our meeting, uh, here at city hall at six o'clock, but then the chief had arranged for council to make a trip over to the care car, which was over, uh, in the industrial park. And, uh, the care car, uh, essentially provides training in the event of an accident, uh, on a railroad, maybe a derailment or a fire explosion in a railcar. And the DuPont provides this training to municipalities all over the country, had no charge. Unfortunately, it sounds like the, uh, program may be cut, uh, which was a huge discipline. Anyways, chief, we thank you for the opportunity to go over there and, uh, have the opportunity to do a little bit of training. Very welcome. Chief, uh, Shepherd, do you have anything to add?
No, sir.
Chief Huggins, you have anything?
That's been, I thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Streets and drainage, Mr. Effley.
Thank you, Mr. President. The streets and drainage committee met this evening at five-thirty. Bob Geller, superintend, gave his reports. Uh, first item on the agenda, uh, we, uh, said that the, uh, finalization of purchase of salt for this year has completed. Uh, the farms are full of salt and, uh, the total cost was like about twenty-three thousand dollars a acre. So we had to pay a little bit to discharge the bins. Second item, uh, we're spraying weeds around the area. Second item, we're spraying weed around the area at present time. They're doing this very good job. Third item on his agenda, is the water problem that we're trying to come up with some kind of solutions to, better problem, that water is being taken away there, and we're still working to come up with solutions. They have weak holes, they've got channels, but they're still experimenting ways of solving problems. They'll just keep working on it, and see if it's possible, if we might definitely see a better way. Fourth item on the agenda, they are, uh, the park is currently burning the streets, doing the work on Lindell Road, and burning the east. Fifth item on the agenda, goes the mosquito spray. People in the city need to know that on Tuesday and Fridays, we are spraying for mosquitoes. On Tuesday evening, it starts at ten, ten o'clock. In the evening, on Fridays, it starts at eleven. Weather permitted, and that means if the rain or the winds are above ten miles an hour, to do this the next evening. So people need to get out, walk in all the early, or out the afternoon, this spray might be necessary. We just, that needs, let you know that we're out there to spray. The sixth item, we do, Bob, goes to Summit Street, which will do a small portion there in the city, Summit, Summit Street, and we've had three askings on bids on asphalt paving, three bids, range thirty-four, forty-three thousand, sixty-six thousand. Also, we looked at a Chip and Seal program, and we had a bid from Shell Company on six thousand three hundred and seventy-nine dollars. And we also had a bid from Madison Township, who would, if we would buy the emulsion and stone, charge us four thousand dollars to do the work. We are looking at maybe a total cost of maybe twenty-two thousand to do this job, and it needs to be done quickly. So we're looking to getting this done. Under other items, Bob brought up that they are currently replacing the roof at the street parks over there, and an oil interceptor that we are trying to get out, waiting for it to get at the start. Street sign situation, they are going to have to redo that. If you don't know, we have to have a certain elimination of the signs at the, uh, I read, I want to say this in the past month, the Obama administration has halted the federal requirement for that mandate. However, was it community development block grant money that we were utilizing for that law?
Yep.
And as part of attaining that grant money, this was the project that we dedicated it to. So in essence, if we were to stop, we would lose the grant money for that, and of course not be able to redirect it to any other program, we wouldn't get it for the year, which doesn't make a lot of sense. Right, right now, we're looking at, after rebuilding, the problem, I told the people we're starting to bring up, it's, uh, we, oh, I just want to go back on the Chip and Seal, Madison Township, the money that we paid that with, the amount of the, I don't know, the missing tax from the county, to help us pay for that, the payment problem. The mayor brought up these subject, uh, signs that worked well in seventy-nine. We're wondering if we can check into it, the signs are supposed to be brown and white, the signs that we think that we're pulling up were green, so we need to check the Joe Pedersen and the contractor there to see if it looks like it's the problem, the sign that we're supposed to have. So with that, nothing else, this is your report, adjourned at five-thirty-five PM. Bob, do you think that, uh, is it?
Okay, good. Thanks.
Thank you. Community development, Danny, Mr. Henry.
Uh, community development, we're talking, we'll meet, we're going to meet next Monday, I mean, the first Monday in July, I think the office is six, five-thirty, City Council. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Parks and Recreation, Davis Shea, Mrs. Cole.
Thank you, Mr. President. Parks Recreation and Davis Shea met this evening at five-thirty-five. The first item on the agenda was the Tri-City Bike Ride. This was an event that was held on Saturday, June ninth, as a collaboration between Granville, Newark, and Heath. Charlie Kyle attended, representing the city, and reported that about forty bikes were in attendance, and they all received T-shirts for their participation. The second item is that Evans Bike Path Paving, they started to take it to Route Forty, and it's ready to pave. The third item on the agenda was pool repairs and expenses, and there were several items to report here. The first is that American Leak Detection came in last year to assess repairs needed to the baby pool and activity pool, and repairs were made, but this year they're still having problems with water going down. They called in Astro Pool, who built the pool, and they recommended a putty-like compound to repair the baby pool, and it seems to be working. They're still working on issues with the activity pool, because it's still losing water, but they've been able to compensate for the loss. They're waiting for American Leak Detection to recommend a solution. There was the money put in wiring for the membership trailer. Director Geller also reported, we have two controllers that are going bad, which control the chlorine and chemicals. If replaced, those would be at a cost of about four to five thousand dollars each. He requested permission from council to be able to make these type of repairs, if needed, due to time sensitivity, without bringing it back to full council with the support of the mayor, and council voted unanimously to support that. The last item in this area was the trailer for membership applications. This was an idea that came from our new manager, Ann Clippinger. This year, we leased the membership trailer at a cost of a thousand dollars, seems to be working out very well, and Director Geller reported that we could actually purchase the trailer for fifty-eight hundred dollars, which included the steps, or forty-five hundred dollars if we chose to purchase the steps on our own. The manager, Ann Clippinger, will come to our next meeting and report further on that so we can make a decision in that regard. And that's all for Parks Recreation and Davis Shea. We adjourned at six-twenty-five. Do you have anything to add, Bob?
Nothing, thanks.
Okay, thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Planning Commission, Mr. Craig.
Thank you, Mr. President. Planning Commission will meet Thursday, June twenty-eighth, seven PM. Rob, anything to add?
No.
Jim?
It brings in our committee reports, introduction of ordinances, ordinance forty-seven, two thousand twelve.
Ordinance forty-seven, he does a quote, it was a school in section eleven, ninety-nine point four seven, had by ordinances, city, heat, Ohio, to be ready to extract minerals from the high-grade fraction, along the process requiring regulatory approval, to amend sections eleven, ninety-nine point oh one, eleven, ninety-nine point oh two, eleven, ninety-nine point oh four, eleven, ninety-nine point oh six, eleven, ninety-nine point oh seven, eleven, ninety-nine point oh eight, eleven, ninety-nine point oh ten, eleven, ninety-nine point twelve. The substitute, the, the planning commission, for building the shelter heels as a regulatory body, and then highly contracted that planning.
Ordinance forty-seven, two thousand twelve, we have a second reading. Ordinance forty-eight, two thousand twelve.
Ordinance forty-eight, two thousand twelve, the authority, with bidding procedure, all parts and indirect to the mayor, to dispose of the broken ice maker, to the age, limited of their cost for fire parking.
Ordinance forty-eight, two thousand twelve, we have a second reading. Ordinance is on second reading, ordinance forty-four, two thousand twelve.
Ordinance forty-four, two thousand twelve, the ordinance authorizing the establishment of capital project, lots of talk, frankly, I have been in order of approval, and our president, the director, has one, one, ninety thousand. Thousand two hundred ninety dollars and fifty-nine cents, over forty-nine thousand hundred and ten dollars and fifty-nine cents, with the water cash improvement plan, and five hundred forty-five thousand, forty-two dollars, frankly, not in order of approval plan. Also, hold us in direct to the mayor, and, and, on rep, the services, sync, forty-two, forty, north, throw down, Zachary, Ohio, forty-three, oh, oh, one, to construct a border line and pump station, on the east side of Heath, according to the district's decision.
Mr. President?
Mr. Harv, I'd like to make a motion to adopt ordinance number forty-four, twelve.
Motion and second, any discussion? Not a problem.
Kelly?
Yes.
Morrow?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
Jeffrey?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Ordinance forty-four, two thousand twelve, second. Ordinance forty-five, two thousand twelve.
Ordinance forty-five, two thousand twelve, the ordinance authorizing indirect to the mayor, to agree with, for just, uh, destruction services, for Franklin Avenue, water main replacement, and booster station.
Mr. President, Mr. Harv, I'd like to make a motion to adopt ordinance number forty-five, two thousand twelve, second.
Motion and second, any discussion? Not a problem.
Kelly?
Yes.
Morrow?
Yes.
Cole? Yes.
Jeffrey?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Ordinance forty-five, two thousand twelve, is that adopted?
Ordinance forty-six, two thousand twelve, the ordinance perfectly seeing the application for a ZL and running six fifty-four on the drive, in Ohio, forty-three, oh, oh, six, calling it, does it?
Mr. President?
Mr. Henry?
Make a motion if we adopt ordinance forty-six, two thousand twelve.
Second. Motion and second, any discussion? Not a problem.
Kelly?
Yes.
Morrow?
Yes.
Cole? Yes.
Jeffrey?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes. Ordinance forty-six, two thousand twelve, is that adopted? Okay, resolutions on the first reading, they're amended. Resolution on the second reading, they're amended. Reports of city officials, Mr. Eric Allen.
Thank you, Mr. President. One of the walls, all in attendance tonight, and again, especially members of the paved As I said before, I really am going to appreciate what you do, and how you do it, and the importance of the work that you do with the schools and others in the community. You know, when you're young, and you get all the breaks, and everything goes your way, it's pretty easy to make the right choices. But we know that that's not always a situation for young kids as they're growing up. And it's important that when facing challenges and difficult situations, that you react and act in a way that, that is appropriate, not just for the individual's future, but also for the benefit of the whole community. And I just want to say that, Jamie, you do a great job with the group, you deserve tons of recognition for, for what you're doing in the community. You guys know if there's anything that I ever can do, I'll give you a call, and I'll be there for you. And I, again, I just appreciate you being here. I want to, just in case, and if you aren't familiar with the organization that Becky highlighted, which is the CIRF Group, this is a group of citizens who volunteer their time to become mobilized in the case of an emergency, either weather-related or otherwise, here in our area. Chief Huggins, do you recall, was the CIRF Group mobilized this past spring when we had the incident of the flooding in Ebron and?
Yes.
Okay. So, you know, these are the types of situations that this citizens' group responds to. When others are seeking shelter, they're often out driving about, looking for those who maybe have been caught and need help. So Becky, I appreciate you mentioning that group. I've been, had various occasions to interact with the CIRF team and members of them, it's a good group of people, and you know that they're going to be there if the, if the need ever arises, so appreciate you mentioning, mentioning that group. I want to thank this by, for ordinances forty-four and forty-five, which are recently passed, involving the constantly continuing need for us to maintain the infrastructure that we have in the city. In the case of these two ordinances, they involve the water system that we have, and you know, John Geller has highlighted on numerous occasions, our need to ensure a dual feed to WCLT water tank, so that it can supply adequately the east side of the city, should we ever have an issue with its current feed. John, I know you've been banging the drum on this for quite a while, that Franklin Avenue Water Line has been a project that has needed to be done for quite some time. I appreciate this body for passing the ordinances that will help make the repair of that line and the installation of the booster station possible, and also for the fact that, you know, you are willing to take a look at the water and wastewater rates that are what make possible the maintenance of our infrastructure as it relates to, to water and wastewater. So I just want to thank you all for that. As it comes to, to, to projects, we all know that there are a number of projects going on in the city, not just the Hebrew Road Safety Improvement Project. This past Monday, the Hope Wall Drive Bridge was closed. John, when are they going to start removing the decking again?
They should begin removing the concrete products, means the decking, late tomorrow morning.
Okay.
That'll be occurring over quite a few days.
Okay, okay. Now we've got that, we're going to have the booster station being installed, we're going to have the Franklin Avenue Water Line being replaced, the Thornwood Drive culvert, the old WPA project on that culvert, that's going to be replaced. Lots of projects going on in the city. I appreciate everybody's patience with these projects. John, let's continue to try to keep the media updated on the progress of them, and also providing information and updates on the city's website, so that we're doing everything that we can to proactively communicate what's happening and what people can expect. And finally, I want to recognize that not only the folks at Dupont who made possible the railcar training for not just the city of Heath Fire Department, but Chief Huggins, how many different departments were involved in that?
There was a, gosh, Mayor, I don't, I can't give you a count, but I know there was other names, things, people who went through this.
Okay, okay. You know, fantastic opportunity, I'm glad that you were able to take advantage of that. Again, thanks to Dupont, but also want to give thanks to Samuel Strapping, the company out on Port Forty property, that made possible the location of Dupont's railcar system, so that our first responders here in the area were able to take advantage of the training offered by that program. I think that's all I have tonight, Mr. President, so thank you.
Thank you. Auditor Alexander?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to welcome.
Law Director Morrison?
Thank you, Mr. President, I have nothing to report.
Sergeant down there, Mr. Shepherd. Oh, before you start, I have one to just wish you a happy birthday on June the twenty-eighth.
Oh.
I didn't even start.
My step again. I feel a little bit as long as taking another drink. I'd like to draw a curve on here this evening and just say that it was very important, thanks to the government, to the young people, to take, this was needed to help, to keep this country going. I'd use, as I said earlier, to give you a, just my, same.
Mr. Harv? Thank you, Mr. President. We've talked on these schools, like you say, it's wound, this group here tonight, something to be proud of, very needed, and also you have the youth and government. And, uh, also, we have the youth and government, uh, parent, uh, people here, so, thank you. Chief Huggins, uh, excellent job on, on bringing the train car to, to Heath, and also, uh, for sharing with all of the, uh, county. Thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. John?
Thank you, Mr. President. I took a lot of time every night, and, uh, I would like to, to, uh, you come to Don's in the Green River. Uh, thank you so much for what you guys do. This is, uh, you know, it's, you got to be a lot of peer pressure out there, and it's often hard for, um, since your age, that are still in school, that, that go out there and fight for what's right, and try to, you know, just people to deal with it. And so, it takes a lot of guts, and, uh, I applaud you all for that, and so, it's a fantastic thing.
Chief Shepherd, uh, thank you very much for taking us out to, on the ground on the track yesterday last week. I was very impressed with you, so, uh, appreciate what you did for that. With that, I have nothing else.
Thank you.
Mrs. Cole? Thank you, Mr. President. I also want to welcome everyone, wish Doug a special happy birthday, and, um, congratulate all of the Pave representatives, all of their efforts to achieve this. You did a great job. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. Henry?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to welcome everyone here. Appreciate you folks very much. I always thought Heath Schools was the best, and volunteering, helping, it's the best way to keep our country free and just support our armed forces, and just with the battles in Miami. Just back there, and taught us a few lessons involving jury, and, uh, just active, and, uh, just keep up the good work. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Mr. Gregor? Thank you. Welcome everyone. Jan, great effort. Thanks to you and all your family members. You're all of us as well. A lot of Green Rivers to mention there.
It's just the programs that are in the, uh...
Finally, uh, YouTube, what's the address again for YouTube to get to City Council?
Uh, it's youtube.com/SignWatch. Actually, what I'll do is-
SignWatch.
SignWatch. And what I'll do tonight is email City Council with link, so you can just click on it and go there.
That would be great, Mr. President.
I now have over twenty hours of, uh, few quotes on YouTube. Wow. Oh, it's exciting.
Thank you.
Uh, Lynn, you have anything? Um, starting down there, Chief Huggins?
Nothing, thank you, too.
Chief Shepherd?
Yes.
Mr. Marrow?
Nothing, thank you.
Let's start with, uh, John Miller?
Nothing, good.
Ken Miller?
Yeah.
Something, okay. Um, I just got a couple of housekeeping things to, you know what? First, uh, our next meeting, July second, will be in here at twelve thirty. Before that, if you can be here at twelve twenty, we'll have a short caucus over there in the meeting room. Uh, and then if you can't make that meeting, if you're not going to be here at twelve thirty, let Lynn know ahead of time, so that we're not waiting around for you or something like that. I think you get kind of traffic or something like that. Um, and then we will have, there's two things we have tonight, we'll be on the agenda for then. Yeah, they don't think they're controversial at all, so they shouldn't ask, but let's make sure we at least have four members here when we have a meeting. And then keep your reports, make your reports short, you know? That meeting, so we can hopefully get out here timely fashion to get on every, that, uh, park for the, start spending celebration that night. Um, that's the first thing. Second thing, on, um, the video that you're doing, can you hear, hear us? Can you hear the visitors very well?
Pretty well. Mr. Heffley is a little, little, uh, light.
Uh, he's getting old, he can't talk. We'll get your speak up a little louder.
Actually, Dents Mike is working beautifully, but Doug's isn't seeming to work at all.
Yeah, I just, I was curious about that.
Can you hear Doug, definitely?
Can you hear Mr. Marrow?
I'm reading your lips.
Thank you. Okay, and, uh, I will be here next Monday for the meetings and stuff that'll look for me. I should be somewhere between Burbank and Vegas, down in Haiti, and, uh, we'll see how that goes. Uh, and, I don't even think, uh, new business, none. Reated bids, none. Miscellaneous, none. Eric?
How's it?
Have a motion, second, all clear, say aye?
Aye.
Eric?